Any specific Consular, it's out of the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's rise those who are able to do the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Gaudi.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Starks.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weirin.
Here.
Very good. Full House, and our first item of the business Chamber of Commerce Tourism Update with Lynn Oberding.
Do you want me to hand these out?
Not yet.
Okay. Good evening. Lynn Oberding, President and CEO of the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors, for letting Andrew Potter, who's our Tourism Director, and I come tonight to talk to you a little bit about Hotel Motel Tax. So, to start, I want to explain to you what the Hotel Motel Tax is. So, when someone comes into the community, and they stay at one of our local hotels or motels, they pay a lodging tax. That tax is then, obviously, paid to the hotel. The hotel pays it to the, through reporting to the state of Iowa. The state of Iowa pays it to the municipalities, so in this case, the city of Marshalltown, on a quarterly basis. And then the city, in turn, makes a payment to us as the contract holder for the Hotel Motel Agreement. Currently, our portion of that payment is 67 percent. So, I give you an example here. Quarterly payments are always one quarter behind, so we received a payment in December, and that was for the time period of July through September of 2020. So, something interesting that happened last year was, prior to the last legislative session, 2020, what would happen is, if someone came and stayed in one of our hotels or motels for 30 days, they would pay the lodging tax every day. If they stayed for 31 days, they wouldn't pay any lodging tax. So, they wouldn't pay for 31 days. They also wouldn't have to pay. It would be forgiven for the first 30 days that they stayed. And during the legislative session last year, that was changed, and the date was moved to 90 days. But, the difference is, now, if someone stays 90 days, they pay the lodging tax for 1 through 90 days. If they stay 91 days, they still pay the lodging tax for the first 1 through 90 days. And that is something that various groups, including the Chamber, the Iowa Chamber Alliance, and some of our travel industry associations, including the Travel Federation of Iowa, worked to update this, because what was happening is, cities were losing out on that lodging fund, those lodging funds, and CVBs or Chambers, or whoever would be recipients of the rest of the Hotel Motel Tax, were also losing out on those funds. So, again, now, if anyone stays 90 days, they pay the lodging tax, and they still pay the lodging tax beyond, for the first 90 days, even if they stay beyond the 90 days of any stay in a hotel or motel. One of the things that the Tourism, or what was previously the Convention and Visitors Bureau, one of the things that we do is promote Marshalltown for conferences and meetings. We also just promote the community in general. So, we're talking about some of the attractions, the things that people can do, the recreation. Andrew's going to talk a little bit about some specific examples, but I think we have really worked hard over the last number of years to promote the recreational opportunities, so things through Grimes Farm, through Parks and Rec. But, really, what the Convention and Visitors Bureau, or the Tourism Department, really was designed to do was to bring visitors into the community through conferences and meetings. So, we really want to work with those meeting planners, and find ways to promote Marshalltown as a meeting destination. So, our mission at the Chamber is to advocate and promote for business and tourism, and so that's what we do on a daily basis. I'm going to let Andrew talk a little bit about some specifics of what we do and how we utilize the Hotel Motel Funds.
Okay. Yeah, we promote the area attractions in town through use of photos, videos, social media, partnerships, and more. And for these meeting planners, I'm really in contact with them to see what they need from us. We want meeting planners to have successful events here, whether it be a conference, whether it be a sports tournament, and we're just a resource for them. We can connect them with people in the community that they need, and we just want people to feel comfortable having their events here, so they'll continue to come back. So, our office is in contact with different meeting planners, different people from statewide associations, and recently, more into the sports realm, we are continuing to have a renewed focus on sports tournaments and sports leagues. We have some great facilities here in town. Thanks to the Council for supporting the Coliseum, for the tennis courts. I just learned about the tennis courts today. We got an adult-
You didn't just learn about the tennis courts today.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
You should have been knew about the tennis courts.
Yeah, I know. I just learned today about an event coming up, an adult tournament, USTA tournament, coming in June, to the new tennis court. So, we appreciate your guys' support of that, and our facilities, and everything like that. So, we continue, for a town our size, we have some great sports facilities, the Y, you know, the different Little League Diamonds, the football fields, and now the tennis courts and the Coliseum, obviously. So, we're really excited about that. So, and this example of the Coliseum is the video projects. I just did a recent video project with Jeff Hubbard, who's the doorman downstairs. He was letting everybody in. But, yeah, so we just did a project with him, and our videos are really getting some notice throughout the state. Our last video with the Coliseum has more than 5,000 views, and that was just, that's just in the past couple of weeks. So, we're excited to kind of promote that. And obviously, this year's been different with the events being canceled. You know, Oktoberfest, we usually support that a lot. With the fair, we usually support that a lot. So, this year's been different. So, we've had to be a little bit creative in promoting things that were more socially distanced and everything like that. But, we continue to try to promote the community, and we look forward to the vaccine getting out there, and more events coming back to town, and conferences. And we also have tourism grants that, quarterly, we award tourism grants. And there's photos of examples of the grants. The 16-inch softball tournament has gotten a grant, Holiday Stroll, the Y with their swim meets, and then also fireworks. Those are some examples of the tourism grants that we award quarterly. We have a committee that meets and goes over those applications and awards tourism grants. And over the past few years, we've, since 2018, we've totaled $119,762 in tourism grants. And you'll notice some more photos of some of the things we support, the Coliseum, Oktoberfest, one of the concerts from the Central Iowa Fairs pictured there, and some of the bigger ticket items from those grants. But, they vary from, you know, they could be a couple hundred dollars, all the way up to multiple thousands of dollars in tourism grants. That we use those Hotel Motel Tax funds and pass them on to the events in the community that we're supporting. And a lot of times, a lot of these events won't even go on without some of these grants. So, we're excited to support them like that. So. Other projects we do from my office, we do this week in Marshalltown Weekly Events Newsletter, and it also connects people to our community calendar, which we try to promote. And obviously, that didn't see as much growth this past year because of the events being canceled. But, we are looking forward to continuing those events as they move on. We advertise in statewide publications, like this one that Lynn's handing out. We also advertise in our Iowa and Travel Iowa Magazine. She's handing out This is Iowa Magazine that we advertise. We, I talked about the sports groups leaders. We've had a sports group leader discussion group we started recently. And we also, over the past year, started an Event Planners Discussion Group, where we get people together, share ideas, and especially was important in COVID times. Event planners are, what are we doing? What are our people doing in town? How can we still put on events? And so, those groups continue, and those are led by myself. And so, we have sports groups and event planner discussion groups. And also, we're looking forward to Regional Marketing Plan, continuing to market throughout the state, our community, whether it be the trails, whether it be sporting events, whether it be all sorts of things that our community, I mean, I really love the community, so I went for this job because I want people to love it as much as I do, because I love Marshalltown, and it's a great place to be. So.
So, if you want to just take a look at this publication we're providing to you, Marshalltown's advertorial page is on page four, right across from the table of contents. So, we took an ad out in this publication. It's going to be distributed through the Iowa Economic Development Authority as a way to promote, for IEDA to promote people to visit the state of Iowa, and new businesses to come in, so as a recruitment tool. And then we're going to use it through various outlets that we have, meeting planners who might want to look at having a regional or state meeting here, anything that, you know, we would be able to bring, maybe even outside groups into the community for more of a Midwest regional meeting. So, this is a great opportunity for us to showcase Marshalltown. So, we wanted to make sure you all had a copy of that. And for Councilman Martin and Councilman Weirin, we will have copies available. I left some extra copies with Jessica, so we'll have some copies for you available as well. So, to just talk in general about what the Hotel Motel funding covers, it does cover the overhead, the general operating costs of things like salary and benefits, the professional development of the tourism staff, so Andrew's opportunity to attend professional development opportunities. Again, our overhead, so a portion of rent, office supplies, copy machine lease, things like that. The dues that go towards our tourism associations, so the Central Iowa Tourism, Travel Federation of Iowa, I'm going to miss a couple, because there are several of them, but the things that we support through our work, we pay the dues for those travel associations. The grants that Andrew mentioned, we spend a lot, we partition a lot of the money off for grants, as well as advertising. So, that is advertising that is done locally to promote events, as well as statewide. And there's various ways that we do that through the examples that Andrew shared. I think there's also been some co-op advertising available through some of our travel associations that we've taken part in. And we did advertising with the TV station in Cedar Rapids several years ago, just last year, I guess it was, that did the week-long promotion of Marshalltown was post, excuse me, a year post tornado. We advertised in the Cedar Rapids area for people to come visit Marshalltown, and obviously, take advantage of our attractions and our local businesses. And then there's also some just specific tourism, special projects that we do, welcome receptions for groups that come to town. Sometimes, instead of a welcome reception, we'll sponsor a break of a meeting or a convention that's coming to the community. We have the electronic sign in the Hy-Vee parking lot, and so, that's a way that we also promote things that are going on in the community. What it doesn't fund, so it does not fund, the Hotel Motel Tax does not fund any lobbying or advocacy that we do, with the exception of any efforts that are tourism-specific. So, if there's advocacy that is done through the tourism associations that we're a part of, that would be very tourism-specific. Any non-tourism staff expenses, chamber member-related events and programs, or economic development projects. So, I know a question came up about advocacy, and the Chamber being a lobbying group. So, I just want to share with you that we have two payments that go out of our organization. One is to the US Chamber of Commerce, and one's to the Iowa Chamber Alliance. Those two associations in total, we spend $5,300 a year in dues to those organizations. We really utilize the US Chamber more for professional development. We are an accredited Chamber of Commerce through the US Chamber, and so maintaining our membership with them maintains our accreditation. But, those funds do not come out of the Hotel Motel Tax that we receive. It's money that comes out of Chamber dues and Chamber events. We utilize fund accounting, just like the city does. So, money comes in from specific sources and goes out for specific line items. So, Hotel Motel Tax comes in, it goes out for tourism-related activities that we've mentioned today. So, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have, but hopefully this has given you a little bit of, just an overview of how we, as an organization, utilize the partnership with the city and the Hotel Motel Tax. And obviously, we are very appreciative of the number of years in partnership that we've had with the city. And the Chamber has been the, sort of the contract owner for the Hotel Motel Tax since its inception in the 90s. So, while we're under a new structure at the Chamber, a lot of what we've done up to this point is still very much the same. I know Councilman Hoop has been on the, was previously on the CVB Board, and sort of understands a lot of these things. And so, the money has always come in, and has always gone out for tourism-related activities.
Thanks, Lynn. Are there any questions or comments by the Counselors?
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
Thanks, Lynn, and Andrew. Couple of questions. So, it always hasn't been, we're projecting, what, $248,000 a year? But, it always hasn't been that, obviously.
For the current fiscal year, and for next fiscal year, we're at $400,000 in total collections, is what we're estimating.
But, 67 percent is going to them.
Two sixty-eight.
Two sixty-eight, okay. Thanks, Diana. But, so you said you've given, what was it? I missed the number. Was it $118,000 in grants that comes out of that money?
Approximately.
So, if I did the math right, over 12 years, you've given about $10,000 a year in grants. So, you must have a budget item that you do.
Yes.
And then-
And I will say that in years where the Hotel Motel Tax payments have been higher, we have put more money sometimes into grants. So, perhaps, we may budget 10,000, but the revenue coming in is higher, and so we might actually give more than that. So, you maybe saw, there was $15,000 that went, for example, $15,000 that went to the Coliseum.
Yeah, and then $18,000 for the Y.
Right.
Okay, so, my second question is, was there a tourism arm of the Chamber before the state funding began?
So, previously to, I mean, prior to Hotel Motel Tax, yeah, there would have been, I mean, I didn't live in Marshalltown at the time, but looking back and things that the Chamber has done historically, there was, that would have been an organization that was promoting the community. I can't speak specifically to if that, the work that was being done was as driven by tourism as what we're trying to do now, and by visitors coming to the community. But, when that opportunity came up, and Conrad DeJarden is the one that said, "I think this is something we should endorse." And so, that, those funds come in for a very specific purpose, and are utilized for that purpose.
Okay. Okay. And then, I think this is my final question. What is it that you do as the receiver of these funds that we couldn't do ourselves?
I think there's a lot of things that the money goes towards, that as a, sort of, an arm's length away from the funds allows us to do. So, again, you go back to those grants. It allows us to grant those dollars out for continued events coming into the community, and attractions into the community. The state law requires that 50% of that fund, those funds have to go towards tourism-related activities. And so, I think that, over time, we've proven that we've been good stewards of those dollars, and utilize them in the way that they're intended to be utilized.
Thanks.
I'd just like to speak too. We just have a marketing background. Our office has marketing people there, and I have a marketing background as well. And our administrative assistant designs ads for me occasionally. So, we kind of have the marketing expertise, and so we have the resources as well with the Hotel Motel Tax. So, we just combine the marketing, you know, acumen with the resources of the Hotel Motel Tax.
And Andrew, I get that. But, I guess, as an elected official, I have to answer to the residents and the taxpayers first, you know, with their money. And if state, and we have a general fund deficit almost every year, and if the state statute allows us to use the money ourselves, where's the benefit to us of farming out taxpayers' money if we could do everything in-house ourselves? I mean, you live in town, right? As a taxpayer, you want us to be a good steward of your money. So, I'm saying, why wouldn't we use, I mean-
But, Andrew, as a taxpayer, is not paying this particular tax.
No, I know, I know. But, you said you have been the owner, the Chamber's been the owner of this, has benefited from this Hotel Motel Tax since inception. What's to keep us, two alternatives, keeping the money for ourselves, and using it, utilizing it, and doing the same things you're doing, and even more? Or, if we found another company proposed that they become an arm, an agency that does Convention and Visitors Bureau of Tourism. There's nothing written that it has to go to the Chamber of Commerce in town. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other Counselors have any comments or questions?
Your Honor, yes.
Mr. Martin.
I'd like to thank Lynn and Andrew for their presentation, first of all. I've become aware of the outreach in marketing statewide that comes out of Marshalltown through this Chamber Tourism Committee. And I'm pleased with the quality of it, and the aggressive stance that the Chamber takes. This is a valued partnership, truly a partnership that is local, with local talent, local knowledge. And the outreach is very important to the businesses, as well as the recreational aspects of what is offered in our community. So, I think this is an important step, and I've watched the progress since the Hotel Motel Tax has been initiated some years ago. And I think I'm really pleased with the results. This especially, these last two years, in fact, have been especially tough for marketing and so on. And I think we've come through that, or coming through that, with creativity and some real energy. So, I guess, from this point, my point of view is, I am very appreciative of what has been done.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Isom.
I have an echo to what Bill has said, and I think that does, I think, as a Council, one of the conversations brought up with regards to budget season, and I think kind of what Gary was alluding to, is what direct impact does, say, changing that from 67% to 50% do, and what direct impact does that have on the Chamber, and your guys' functions, to what's inclusive to the work that you guys provide for the city?
So, if that change were to happen, we'd have to make decisions based on, obviously, those dollars coming in. But, it would impact advertising, it would impact the grants that would be able to go out to support the local attractions and the events. We'd have to look at what, you know, I mean, it would include everything, what staffing looked like, and could that maintain a full-time staff person? Does that change that? But, there's a lot of things related to those dollars coming in that would be cut because of the change in the percentage.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, it's Bethany. So, I noticed the current resolution is just for one year, and that our agreement ends the end of June. I think it would be nice to make that a longer contract, if possible. Is that possible, Ms. Kinzer?
Yes, it certainly is. So, this has been something, I think, we've kind of discussed going forward of if we can come to some sort of an agreement, that we would try and extend it for a longer period of time.
I'd like to see that. I think that would give the Chamber some stability and ability to plan into the future.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Point of order, or a clarification. Ms. Kinzer's comment, you know, saying that "we" would like to see that longer term, I think it means, the taxpayers need to know that Ms. Kinzer's on the board of the Chamber, as well as the city administrator, working for us.
Yes, that's correct. I'm the city's voting representative on the Chamber Board, for all clarification. When I said "we," I meant staff, not "we" as the Chamber or anything. As staff members, when we're managing contracts, we do like to see length added to them, just because it's less administrative work that we then have to do annually, when it's basically renewing the same thing over and over again. So, that's what I meant by "we," was from a staff perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other Counselors wish to speak? Thanks for the report.
Thank you.
I especially liked what you did for the businesses, the restaurants and other businesses that were closed for COVID, and when they'd reopen, you'd let everybody know. The outreach has been better the last two years than I can ever remember it. So, good work.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Are we looking to make a decision tonight, or is that a future meeting?
Whoops.
We've got it under discussion, so I don't think we had it up for a vote, but-
So, I think it's really leading into the next item, Your Honor.
Okay.
Which is that, you know, this was requested after we kind of went through what are some possibilities with managing our deficit in the general fund. And I'm going to pull this back up here. We provided you kind of a listing with five options, of which this was one option. I mean, either of these, any of these can be taken singularly. Some would have to be done in combination, as well to make up that $62,000 deficit. And so, really, so that Diana can keep moving forward, we would like some direction on how you would like to handle this general fund deficit tonight, so that we can start to get some of those budgets into a format where we're ready to bring them forward to you on February 22nd, to set a public hearing.
It does seem like that the more, the next item on the agenda is the more logical time to discuss that. So, if anybody, if nobody has anything else on this topic, I probably should open the mic and the phones and computers for 10 seconds for public comment.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. We are funding two Chamber groups. We're funding the Chamber of Commerce and MCBD. MCD, MCBD could easily be part of the Chamber. They could combine, and you could save a lot of money in staffing on the MCBD side of things. And the Chamber is a more logical group to keep in place and remove the MCBD from the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's keep the clock going for another 10 seconds. Okay, mute away. Let's go on to discussion number two, review of general fund deficit and options.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, we're just going to talk about this page here, since it's, the other part of the memo is exactly the same as it was before. So, we laid, outlined some options for you last week, because we are in a budget deficit. Without our carryforward, you could use your carryforward from the general fund. You could reduce the Chamber, could reduce non-bargaining wages, could use loss funds, could use any of these options that we've outlined below. Or, we can go back to the drawing board and start over, and discover other things. But, we do need to move forward, as Jessica mentioned, because the budget period is short. So, after thinking about this over the past week, do you have any suggestions or direction?
Your Honor.
Ms. Martin.
I think it's easy and straightforward to look at the use, option number four, the use of fund balance. It's easy and understandable. I really appreciate the department heads and the folks in those departments for really looking at places where they might, you know, decrease their asking and so on. And I appreciate that whole effort. It was substantial. But, I come back to option four, and I favor that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor. I want to ask you a question about option four. I believe you had said the last time, those are out of CARES Act funds. Is that correct?
Well, okay, when this, when the federal government allocated the money to the states, the states could then move it down to the cities and counties. What we used it for was to offset our police and fire department wages. So, that, therefore, it freed up other costs or other revenue. We did use 200- We did use $200,000 for radios for the police department and the YSS contract for $150,000, which is gone $75,000 each year. So because our other revenues were down, then that CARES Act helped bring that back into balance better. But yes, we'll have a carryforward this year.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Your Honor, I guess, not knowing what the future holds and what next natural disaster befalls Marshalltown, I respectfully disagree. I think that balance needs to stay there. We need to, we need to solve the problem instead of, you know, keep robbing Peter to pay Paul to solve this deficit every year. We've got to make some hard decisions, so I guess I like having that checkbook balance sitting out there. So I do not agree with option four.
Any other consular who wished to weigh in?
Your Honor.
Mr. Isom.
Looking at all the options and echoing kind of what I said last time, I don't think option two or option five were any viable option, at least where, at least my head was at. To Gary's point, I understand the surplus, but that's probably my favorite of the current five options that are being evaluated. I don't think continuing to transfer council-designated loss for deficits or other such items is the most appropriate use of those funds. And at this point in time, I don't agree with changing the current Chamber agreement as it exists today.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your Honor, just a quick question for Diana. On the amount we have in lost, I don't have that right in front of me. That was like $2 million, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Of council-designated.
I think probably everybody since I've been on here realizes that I usually try to, as much as we can, use that for, to buy down the property tax, always have. Obviously with, I agree with Gary, over the seven years I've been here, we've always managed to stay in the red in the general fund, and I think there is a valid point to trying to get that to, black numbers are zero especially. But I do agree with Gabe, I don't think the $62,000 is really detrimental to that 400 grand, so I don't agree with option one. I think they should be funded as is. In fact, I think that should be moved down to five years, but that's just me. So if I was going to use any one of them, it'd be option four.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the council wished to weigh in? It seems like we're inching toward a consensus there. And if not, let's open the mics to the public.
The mics are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you. 10 seconds it is. Is there anyone willing to make a motion to the effect of having it be option number four?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has its direction. Onto the next item, and that's for your 2022 budget, Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So normally, we bring you the, talk about the transit fund when we're talking about enterprise funds. But this year, with the debt service levy and the transit levy and all the other levies, we needed to bring this to you quicker. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight. So the transit fund also received CARES grant money this year. They'll spend some of it, well, they'll get some of it this year and some next year because it's a reimbursement. So what you need to know is that by having those revenues rather than our regular ridership revenues, the formulas for the state and the federal assistance grants play into that. So if the local revenues go down because of ridership, you can't substitute the CARES grant money, because that's another federal program. And you can't use one federal program to match another federal program. So I tried to outline the explanation for you in the memo. You can see that last time, we were going to say we were going to levy $50,000, and now we're going to change that to $150,000, so we don't lose that local match that's required for the state and federal money. And it's unlikely that the CARES Act will carry on too much further. I mean, we do have it budgeted for FY '21 and FY '22, but beyond that, we don't know. So if you look at the, if you look at the cash balance, you can see that we, at the end of fiscal year '20, we ended with $168,000. Our net activity for this current fiscal year is $222,000, so that brings our cash balance at June 30th of '21 at $391,000. We're projecting a small deficit in FY '22, but we still have a very healthy balance of $365,000 at the end of '22. So I know this is a lot of information, and I do have the Transit Director here. Have you?
Unmuted.
Have any questions for him? So is there anything that you would like to ask?
Any questions for Diana first, or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody understands this. We don't get penalized for carrying a balance on an enterprise fund.
Right. We don't get penalized for carrying any balance on any fund.
Other questions or comments for Diana? Would anyone like our Transportation Director to answer questions? What, what kind of relief or motion or direction are you looking for in staff on this one?
Well, we did change the levy from $50,000 to $150,000, so we definitely need you to agree or disagree on that. Later in the meeting, we're going to talk about the overall debt levy and all the other levies, all the other certification of property tax. And that's already been changed in your documents as we go through them later in the evening.
We probably should open the mics and phones for 10 seconds, and then I'll call for a motion.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
10 seconds are up. I would entertain a motion to change from $50,000 to $150,000, as suggested by staff.
So moved, Your Honor?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We've had the discussion and mics open, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Warren?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, that carried. Next item is the McTV funding request.
Okay, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So part of the budget package is to do the long-term debt schedule. Let's see, right here.
And I can zoom in and do all that sort of stuff for you, Diana.
Okay.
Oh, so I jumped ahead. We weren't finished on the, no, we weren't, were we?
Correct, there's three items under the FY '22 budget.
Sorry, you bet. Long-term debt schedule it is.
Okay, so this outlines what is owed for debt payments, principal and interest payments, and the bond fees every year by bond. So you can see over here the different bond numbers, and whether they're general obligation or whether they're revenue. So the difference is that if they're general obligation bonds, then we have the authority to levy taxes for it. So a lot of these items are not 100% levied, because we have other sources. For example, the bond, the 2020 bond, if you recall, had about $3,300, or $3.3 million of stormwater that was included in there. Well, that's paid out of the enterprise fund, and that, and not the general, and not the debt levy. So in column J, this is what's being subtracted off. So it's either TIF or enterprise revenue. So that lowers the total amount here. So right now, without any additional local option sales tax, other than what we would collect for the year, you're looking at a levy of $995,000. Do you have any questions on this spreadsheet before I go on to the next one? This is our report out of our Tyler software system. So it just shows you your activity from last year, our year-to-date for this year, which includes the $3 million, those $3 million that we refunded. So this wasn't budgeted before, so we had to put it in the budget. So when we do our budget amendment, we'll pick it up. So we have $3 million coming in, and down here, we have part of this number is the $3 million going back out.
Can you zoom in, Diana, on those?
So we have our interest payments and our bond fees. So is there any questions on this? And you can see our Fund 200 cash balance, pretty consistent from year to year. We like to leave a cash balance in there, because if we do have new bonds throughout a future year that we never budgeted for, then we can at least pick up the interest and principal payment for the June 1st bond payments, if we need to. Any questions on that? Okay, so we'll go over to the property tax levy. And I gave you a hard copy for ease. So what this is, it tells you your property evaluations up here. All your levies, except for the debt levy, uses this $908 million number, the debt service. You can include a few more things, so it picks up $933 million. So these numbers should look very familiar to you, because they were what was on the maximum property tax levy at the last meeting, except the change is $150,000 to transit rather than $50,000. We have the Civic Center, Fisher Community Center, $100,000. Our liability insurance at $215,000, support of local emergency management, $32,000. I changed the band from $3,000 to $11,000. Here's the levy for the public library, $245,000. Ag, about $17,000. So this is the money that comes into the general fund, $8.1 million. Of that is, $7.2 million is from property tax, and the difference between those is for the utility tax, or gas and electric. Did you have a question? Okay. Here's our emergency levy that we talked about last week, so that's 27 cents. Goes, comes into the special revenue fund, transfers back out into the general fund. Our police and fire retirement, FICA, NIPers, and other employee benefits. Each of those come into the special revenue fund, which I talked about last week, and transfer back to the general fund. So here's our debt service levy that we just saw on that other sheet, $995,000. And then our capital improvement reserve, which is 67 and 1/2 cents, which ties into the CIP plan. So right now, we're sitting at a levy of $15.377, which is very close to last year. Last year was $15.38, so very close. In the past, what you've done is, if you wanted to drop the rate, you would take the local option sales tax, either the fund balance that's in the debt service levy, or the council-designated money, and apply it to lower that rate. So since we're already at the, basically the same rate as last year, I have not done anything at this point. Any questions on those? And we'll be talking about local option sales tax and two more items. Any questions?
Let me ask for a show of hands, those that would like me to open the mic for 10 seconds on this topic. Okay, let's open them.
The mics are open, Your Honor.
Sorry, Bethany, we couldn't see your hand.
That's okay, no problem.
My hand is up, thank you.
Put it down, 10 seconds are up.
Put her down, put it down.
Okay. And the request from staff from the council is what, at this point?
Well, I think, you know, there's, we've typically kind of had a conversation of, we're just kind of showing you what things look like right now. But, you know, in the conversation with local option sales tax, which is coming up, that's when, if there's some actions you'd like to use with that money, I think that's the better time for conversation on that.
All right, done with this topic three, or do we still need to address the preliminary certification of levy of taxes, or is that what we just?
That's what we just did.
All right, let's then move on to the fourth item, and that is the McTV funding request.
Need to get to my desktop. Actually, can I, can I just get over here?
Sure.
I didn't get it started here, but it's easier to maneuver with this mouse.
We have a short video that we'd like to show, just because...
Do you want to start out with this, or?
Well, yeah, that, I'm, Mark, well, go ahead, yeah.
You're, you're good.
So what do I need to do?
You just need to hit play at the bottom when you're ready to go.
And before you do that, go ahead and introduce yourself, Mark.
Yes. Okay, excuse me, Mark Osmanson, 1916, Gethman Lane. I'm representing the Marshalltown Community Television, also known as McTV. And in addition to the council meetings and school board meetings, McTV provides a variety of local programming, and we have a short video that we'd like to present right now, so... The buzzes are part of the music, it's not a sound problem.
Bill Martin, you just missed your picture.
As you saw, there's quite a bit of variety in our local programming that's been presented by McTV. The past year has had its challenges with the COVID situation and the duratio. There were fewer opportunities to broadcast entertainment events in our community, both indoors and outdoors. Many of the events this year were smaller, and some focused on educational and public information issues. However, we've expanded our advisory board, and we'll continue to promote the positive aspects of Marshalltown. Our hope is that later this year, in May and June, and on into the summer months, our outdoor activities will return and continue in the months ahead. In addition, the city's strategic plan, goal number two, is to enhance Marshalltown's public image. One of the objectives listed for this goal is to improve communication of programs and initiatives. Another objective is to support the marketing of Marshalltown. You've all probably seen the strategic plan document, and a lot of work has gone into that, and we look forward to working with the city, the chamber, and other community organizations to accomplish these objectives of the strategic plan. Plus, the new Marshalltown Community Survey that was just unveiled a couple of weeks ago contains several issues that will be addressed over the next two years, and McTV hopes to be a part of these initiatives. We appreciate the council's show of support for McTV by continuing funding during the current fiscal year and during the 30-plus years the channel has been in existence. McTV is uniquely positioned to showcase many of the positive things that are happening in Marshalltown. Therefore, McTV is requesting continued funding for the next two years at $40,000 per year to continue to provide quality local programming for Marshalltown. Marshalltown, more than ever, needs quality local programming that focuses on positive things that are happening in our community. And this has been a quick summary of the McTV activities, and I welcome your questions at this time.
Are there any questions or comments for Mark? Thank you. Should we open the mics again? For public questions or comments?
The lines are unmuted.
Very good. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Is staff looking for direction in terms of a motion at this point?
Well, I think you can certainly make a motion now if you want to, or because the funding source for the last year has been local option sales tax. That is the next item on the agenda, if you'd like to discuss it there.
Let's wrap it in to there then instead, and go on to the local option sales tax.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So local option sales tax. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the state estimates what they're going to send the cities. So they send out 95% of that estimation. And then after the year closes, we get a reconciliation payment into some, or in November, for the other 5%. So in this current fiscal year, we received an additional $232,000. Not knowing if we will get that next year or not, we budgeted without that for FY22. So here are some items I just want to go through. And along the way, I'll ask you some questions. So at the end of fiscal year 20, which ended in June 30th, we had $4.5 million. Of that, $796,000 was for property tax relief. $1.6 million was council-designated, and we still had $2 million left from street and stormwater. So we budgeted $3.4 million originally. When the state sent out our new estimate, it went to $3.9 with the November reconciliation payment. So again, the property tax relief is 78%. Council-designated is 22%. Had a little bit of interest, so these are the revenues coming in for this year. Last year, when we were budgeting, we only expected $2.6 million of our current revenue to go out for debt service. And so these two items together, we, we budgeted another $174,000 coming from property tax relief fund balance to get us what we needed. Since our revenues now increased for this fiscal year, we don't need to use the fund balance to make those $2.8 million in payments for our bonds. Does everybody understand that? The next thing was the cash flow reserve. We'd say we'd take it out of council-designated, $60 million, which we have done now. And then we would transfer money from the general fund, to the general fund, to put us in balance. We were at a deficit of $61,778, which included $40,000 for McTV. Well, now that the general fund for FY21 has a surplus in there, we took this out. I took that out. If you want me to put it back in, I will. So it's either going to show up as a transfer from the general, or from lost to the general fund, or we just use the fund balance. We have a 50% share of housing initiative contract. There's $7,200 left on that one. The Bolton and Mink Downtown Design Guidelines Resolution. Part of that for this year. Transfer for the Edgewood Extension of $1 million. You saw that in the CIP. The airport hangar, we just need $254 for that. The new zoning ordinance contract, we split between fiscal year 21 and 22. It's in purple, for $62,000. In the past, you have allocated some money out of local option sales tax, council-designated for fireworks, for $5,000. So I went ahead and put it in this budget. I need to know whether you want to continue that, so I put $5,000 in for this year and $5,000 in for next year. The shared wall grant, we've already paid that out, $48,000. And then an estimate of our tornado costs, the 15% city match, $120,000. So these are expenses, projected expenses for this year, if we do nothing else. And then this is our cash balance at the end of this fiscal year. So you have $1 million fund balance for the property tax relief, $2.2 million for council-designated, and $1 million for the street and storm. So now we come into FY22. We budgeted $3,692,000. That's the same as this fiscal year, only it doesn't have the November reconciliation payment. So we're taking our current revenues and transferring them to the debt service fund, $2.8 million. That's why on the debt service topic before, I said that you, in the past, have, have bought more, bought it down, bought the debt levy down, the certification levy down, so you use more money. You could use fund balance, or you could use the council-designated. So for FY22, I put in $99,000 for the cash flow reserve. Historically, we funded it at 15%. We already have that much in there right now, so I thought you might want to change it to 16%. And that would be the $99,000. And then for every percentage over, it's an additional $163,000. Our goal originally was to get it 20%. But obviously, that's too much money for one year to do that. Again, you have the fireworks. The new home fire incentive program. IEDA grant match. The sidewalk improvement. There's that zoning ordinance again. The downtown new construction incentive grant, you originally had requested that $250,000 be applied towards that. $100,000 is already out the door, so we have remaining the Marshalltown lofts for $50,000, Garrett Goodman for $50,000, and $50,000 was uncommitted. So the question would be, do we want to not use this $50,000? Or just leave it out there? And then we have the fairway construction of the new store for $65,000. A transfer to the bike trail for $56,000, and then the remaining Edgewood Extension. So you can see, there's still some money left for streets at the end of this, at the end of fiscal year 22. There's $2 million left over for council-designated, and there's $1 million for the debt service. And what, what is unknown is the duratio FEMA 15% match, which we'd like you to consider using that as well for council-designated, which could be as much as $700,000. Depending on, on how we treat certain items. So a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the road use tax, and for the debris cleanup, we would just use the road use tax money for that 15% match. In the CIP, there'd be the streets, which we would also pay out of road use tax. But there's some other categories that would need a match, so. So I'd like to go over some questions, so you can tell me what you want me to do. So in item three, I'm sure you're okay with me not using the fund balance and just using the current year revenues. Since it increased from $2.6 to $3 million, we're going to just use that. Are you okay with that? The next item for discussion is the transfer to the general fund for McTV for the current fiscal year. Do you want me to continue to use $40,000 out of lost, or did you want me to use $40,000 out of the general fund balance? Sure plus that we have for this current fiscal year.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question on that.
Go for it.
If... Earlier tonight, we talked about the local option, or the hotel motel tax as being used for promoting Marshalltown. And you know, there's some discussion to continue it from my counterparts. Why wouldn't the McTV funding be eligible to come out of the hotel motel tax? And we could stop it from coming out of the local option sales tax? Or the other option is, which is what I want to do with the chamber funding is, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is, I want to bring it in-house. I want to, I don't want to just take it down to 50% from 67. I want to bring it down to zero and bring it in-house. And so another option with McTV was, why wouldn't we bring that back, money back in-house? But I guess I have two questions for Diana or Jessica is, if it's going to be, continue to be funded by this board, why couldn't it come out of the hotel motel tax? Would be the first question. But wouldn't it, I don't have that statute, it wasn't sent to me, to see what all qualifies, but...
So I think I, I sent the, the code section out with my Friday report as an attachment, I believe, and so that's what outlays that, that 50% number. I, here's what I would say. I would say that there's probably not a reason that, that you could not fund McTV out of that, but I would say that what we have asked of the chamber is above and beyond of what McTV is currently providing. There's all sorts of regional things that they're supposed to be doing as well in terms of marketing that's not just video marketing or television marketing, and so there's certainly more, I think, that is being asked of the chamber than is being asked of McTV in the two agreements that we have in place.
But there's no reason they both couldn't be funded out of the hotel motel tax?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, that's, if you're asking how you do it, but then, you know, as I, I mentioned earlier, yeah, there's, there's agreements that would need, need to be put in place with both that you would have to coordinate at the same time to make sure that you're not duplicating services. Because I think that's the, the biggest thing that I would be concerned about is, are you paying for the same service twice?
And the hotel motel tax comes into the general fund. So are you saying 67% would go, well, you're not saying that, but currently 67% goes to the tourism? And are you saying you want $40,000 of that? Because then we're back to having a $40,000 greater deficit in the general fund.
We haven't decided, this body hasn't decided if it's going to remain at 60. By law, we have to, it has to be at least 50%.
Right.
This body hasn't decided who gets that 50%. Or if it goes up to 100%, or, you know, whatever.
Uh huh. But if you're saying pay it out of the hotel hotel tax, then that would make the general fund $40,000 more in deficit.
I understand.
Yeah. Just want to make sure everybody did.
I'm just, I just throw that out there. That's,
Yeah.
you know, what they do is similar to promoting the city. I mean, we just watched the, the video. But I guess, you know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to be the best steward of the taxpayers' money. And if we can do things in-house, then why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we approach that, or why wouldn't we investigate that? So.
Oh, I, I'll just answer that from a broader perspective. There's actually multiple things, like one of the things in our budget process this year is that we're looking at, you know, as we have retirements, phasing out the rental inspection program from being in-house personnel to outside personnel. And the reason for that, and, and for any other decisions that we're looking at, is typically because the costs associated with the city employee being our benefits and the different retirement systems and things that we're part of are more expensive than what someone outside of the city would, would be taking on. And so the reason we, and we do this financial calculation at any point in time that, you know, is there, is, is it cost-effective to do something in-house, especially when we have an opportunity to change? I would be happy to work with our HR director and bring back to you a communications director position for the city if that's something that you would be willing to consider. That would basically be doing probably some of the work of both pieces of McTV and the chamber, but I don't know that we would be able to completely do everything that they're doing in-house with resources, well, certainly not with resources that are currently in place, and so then you're, you're doing something new. So, but it can be investigated, and, and as I said, we, we do that cost calculation to make sure that it makes the most sense for the organization. We're all very cost-conscious of the general fund at this point, and trying to do anything we can from a staffing side to make sure that we're keeping things in line.
So, what I heard you say is, we could outsource every position in the city and get a bitter bang for our buck?
I don't know what the county sheriff's department would require us a payment, but, I mean, you certainly could look to do that and see if there's an entity that's willing to perform your functions.
The point I was trying to make is, it's not all about cost, it's about control, it's about oversight, you know? So, I mean, I don't want to put Roger on the street.
I'll second that.
So, but, I, one more question, if I may, Your Honor?
You may.
The cash flow reserve at 15, did we raise that 1% last year?
No.
We didn't, we left it the same. But you want to go, you were, the original plan was to go 1% per year.
Our cash management policies strives to be at 20% total, but we never seem to move...
And we didn't do it last year because we had to put so much money into the general fund to balance it out, right?
Well, you put $61,000 in here.
Huh?
You put $61,000 in last year.
Last year.
To the general fund. $40,000 was from MIC TV.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Other council comments or questions?
So, do you want to transfer, do you want to just use the general fund money to fund MIC TV, basically, this year? This current fiscal year that we already have a contract for through June? Or do you want me to transfer money out of lost to cover that, to make the general fund bigger?
What do you prefer?
It's just as easy to use the general fund surplus, since we have one.
Okay. Should I solicit a motion to that extent?
Don't move, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I guess I never did invite public comment on this topic, did I? 10 seconds.
One second here, Your Honor, I need to get to that screen. The lines are unmuted.
Countdown begins. And 10, call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Okay, very good.
Okay, the next item is the fireworks. So, do you want to fund this this year? We can budget for it, and then, the fireworks committee can come make a presentation, and if you don't want to do it, that's fine, but at least it's budgeted. So, it's $5,000 each fiscal year.
Your Honor?
Ms. Martin?
The fireworks is a community-wide and area-wide event. It's a quality-of-life issue, and I know $5,000 is a real blow to the budget, but I respectfully say that we should spend that money for fireworks.
I agree.
Mr. Hoop, you've been on here a long time, too. We've never failed to fund it, have we?
No.
Okay. Anybody disagree with this? I don't think we need to open the lines on this one. I'm betting everybody is in favor of just $5,000 for the fireworks, so let's go ahead and take a vote.
Your Honor, can we have a motion in a second?
Thought we did. Oh, no.
Don't move here.
My Lord.
Second.
Going to have to up my coffee intake. Thank you. Okay. Well, actually, I'll feel bad if I don't call for the 10 seconds, because I know Bethany's raising her hand right now.
The lines are unmuted.
I believe I had a ghost motion and second there. 10 seconds are up, now let's call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Staff has instruction on that one as well.
Okay, the next item is the cash flow reserve. So, do you want to move it up to 16%? That would be...
I would, Your Honor.
Okay, Weirin has moved, we move it up to 16%. Is there a second to that?
Second, Your Honor.
Martin, seconds. Discussion.
I just want to remind you that once it goes into the reserve, it will require a public hearing to be taken back out.
We kind of like those. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? And if nobody on the council speaks up, let's go ahead and open the mics on this one, too.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Okay, 10 seconds are up. We don't have a motion or second on the floor yet, right?
Yes, we do.
We did.
For one clarification, just 1%, right? The motion was for just to go to 16%?
Correct, move to 16%.
From 15 to 16%?
Correct.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is the downtown new construction incentive program. Lines item 14 and 15. Line 14, there hasn't been very much movement on this project, and then, 15 is uncommitted.
If I recall, number 14 was delayed past this June 1 timeframe?
Yeah, and it is actually, that incentive is contractually committed right now, and so, there needs to be a conversation with that project about that contract, because it's part of that catalyst agreement. And so, I'd not recommend doing anything with number 14 right now at this point, because it's tied into a larger contract.
Okay. And number 15, what was the idea behind having the $50,000 incentive uncommitted, in case somebody else stepped up with the project?
You originally had $250,000 committed, well, going towards the projects.
Right.
People would have to come forward and request it.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Jessica, when does that contract expire, if he doesn't start construction?
The contract, so there's two contracts. Our contract with the state does not expire until April of 2023. The contract that we have in place expires in April of 2021. So, there's a larger conversation that needs to happen about that project specifically and the timeline that it would be on, if it is on the timeline.
So, if construction isn't started by April of 2021, the $50,000, obviously, just, it just comes back into the pool, then?
Well, so, that's where it's more like the restrictions are related to the catalyst funds and not our funds. Our funds really didn't have any restrictions to them, and so, that's where it's difficult to talk about what that looks like, because it's multiple, we committed our local funding sources in a state contract, basically. So, you could, you could put whatever requirements with those, with the local funding in terms of what's out there, because there really is not any restriction on the local funding, since it's our funding. But it is tied up in an existing contract, so that's why I just prefer that we not have any conversation about that tonight, because there is a larger conversation due to multiple funding sources.
And then, say again, when does the catalyst grant expire?
April of 20, or March or April of 2023.
Wow. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Sure. Well, let's focus on the uncommitted $50,000, then. Anybody have any input about that?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Do we have anything in the funnel that's even possible to have a discussion about with regards to that, or, I mean, is that just sitting there to sit there at this point in time?
It's sitting there to sit there. I think if I had a recommendation, you know, in the total picture, you can see that you're working with a decent amount of fund balance. I have felt along if that you hadn't committed anything, knowing this was a program that did exist, that we would always come back to you with a project and ask for that $50,000 in the new construction incentive, if there was not a 50 there. Or if we had two projects that came forward, and you only have 50 that's uncommitted, we'd be asking for that for, you know, two projects. So, I've felt that anything that's sort of downtown development-related would be something that we could bring back to you on an individual basis in the future, and I've hoped that assumption would be correct, basically.
Are you two more comfortable having it uncommitted and staying in the budget where it is now?
It just gives us the authority to spend it, so we don't have to do a budget amendment, you know, a year from now, if you wanted to spend it. So, it's fine to leave it there, in my opinion.
And, Your Honor?
Yes.
I like it that the public sees it's there, knowing that it takes one more unknown away that we will, we will fund towards new construction downtown. I like it as a, an incentive, for lack of a better word. A known incentive, I guess.
Sure. Can I count that as a motion?
To leave it?
Right.
Yes, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Let's unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Time for the roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Staff has instruction on that one, too. Good.
Okay, the last one is the derecho FEMA 15% match. Would you like to budget anything to give us authority to use the council-designated funds for this purpose? If we don't, then Fund 149, where we're tracking the derecho, will go negative, will be negative. So, we'll have to come back a year from now and ask for the match, then, figure out where we're going to pay for it from.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Well, we just put the bids out for the tree removal, so we know we're going to have 15% of that, right?
So, in total, with category A, which is all your debris removal, I think with, we still have another bid that will have to go out for the grinding and hauling of those trees. We easily will probably be over $7 million in total cost from that, but some of that will come from the road use tax fund as well. So, it's a significant amount of money that is just tied up into debris removal, but at this point, we, with some bids still to go, I don't think we have a final accurate total.
But barring any emergency, we need to protect $150,000, then. Just like the uncommitted build, the new construction, we need to, we need to protect that fund to pay that 15%. I would move that if a million is, you feel, Diana, do you feel comfortable with that million also, from what you've seen in the past?
$700,000 is what I estimated, but if there's more coming, if there's more expenses coming, it could go higher.
So, you feel comfortable with the million?
I mean, it's, like I said, it's really hard to tell. I don't know that you necessarily need to designate anything at this moment. I think Justin and I were just talking about putting out this next bid, so that things time well with contractors doing work. So, I feel like we'll have a better grasp on that coming forward. We also, I will just say that this, this has been a very different experience. We're actually working directly with FEMA this time, whereas before, Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management was our direct contact and was helping. I don't think that we have any idea of what they're going to obligate some funds on. There's, there's just, I would say, a lot more unknown. They're trying to do work orders and inspections virtually, and a lot of things get lost in translation, and so, I feel like this is one that Justin, Diana, and I are going to need to stay on top of significantly. But we can always wait to come back with whatever that number is, but I think the thing to realize is that 15% on a bigger disaster than we've had before is a bigger number, and we'll be looking to figure out what's our local match on that.
That said, Your Honor, I would move that we earmark $150,000 just as, just as a placeholder in this budget.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Unmute.
The lines are unmuted.
Time is up. Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Can I ask a question before we leave this?
You may.
The sheet, on number 16, it says $65,000 on hold. Is that?
$56,000.
Trail money, our money, whose money is it?
This is funds that the council directed to the plans and designs for the piece that would connect from the Freedom Rock to the Iowa River Trail. And so, there are some things that are happening with that. There are some things that were in the CIP that would require bonding, and so, there's nothing that's happening in terms of active design being directed currently, but ultimately, there would be some funding designated if you would allocate some bond proceeds when we get to talking about bond proceeds in probably June of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the other question I need to ask before we leave, local option sales tax, is do you want to take any of the fund balance or the council-designated and move it to the debt service levy to make our overall levy rate less?
What do you recommend, and what effect, if any, would it have on our bond rating?
It wouldn't have any effect on our bond rating.
And the staff would recommend what?
I mean, it's basically, we're status quo with the rate, you know, we're basically at the same level we were last year. So, if you wanted to buy it down, for example, if you wanted to drop it, put in $100,000, it's only going to go down to 15.27%. So, if you look on your little sheet, hand out there, it's only going to go down, you know, 10 cents. Go down 10 cents, $100,000 homeowner would save $11 a year, $50,000 homeowner would save five. So, it's a lot of money to put in.
For, Your Honor, could we use that money to buy some GameStop stock? Bitcoin?
There you go.
Your Honor, I don't think there's, right now, there's the return on investment on that today.
Can I treat that as a motion to not move the funds?
Sure.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anybody else want to weigh in on the council? Let's go ahead and unmute.
The lines are unmuted, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So, that was a no on the GameStop?
And the Bitcoin.
You can't buy one at time, man.
Time is up.
It's going to go down.
Vote time.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has instruction. Anything else left on lost?
Yeah, I, the, that would be kind of the continuation with the question about MIC TV, and if you would like to do any funding for them in the next fiscal year.
Anyone wish to address that?
I thought we did.
I think we just did this year. Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. McTV provides a service to the city that the, that the citizens would like to see continue, especially the broadcast of the council meetings. So I suggest you give them the $40,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. We'll leave it open another 10 seconds. Time for the roll call.
Hoop?
Point of clarification, Your Honor?
Sure.
That was a one-year contract is what the motion was for?
We're only discussing funding for fiscal year '22 at this point, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Now roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
That's carried then. Thank you.
That covers that item number five, so we're on to F resolutions. And Madam Clerk, would you read that resolution for us?
Resolution to set public hearing prior to approving the maximum property tax dollars relating to specific property tax levies, levies for the budgeted fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution to set a public hearing?
So move, Your Honor?
I move for a second.
Thank you. I don't expect any debate or discussion, but raise your hand here or shout at me from the phone if I'm wrong. Diana, you'd like to speak?
Yes, I just want to mention that this changed from last week because we changed the transit from 50,000 to 150,000. So, and on the publication form, let's see. Get that up there. The percentage on the right says 0.47. When you actually calculate it, whoops, sorry. When you actually calculate it, it's, we're both doing it. When you actually calculate it, it's .48. And so that's what I put in the resolution. But since this is the publication, it should match. So if you can change the resolution from .48 increase to .47 on the resolution itself, make that correction. The dollar amounts are what is stated.
Does anybody have any objection to just going with the 4.7, the .47 that's in the document itself? Okay. Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Starks?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. We don't have discussion items tonight since it's a special meeting, so the meeting is adjourned at 7:08 PM. Thank you for coming. Staff, thank you for all the work you do on this budget.
Thank you. Bye.